And then if Supervisor Sertie will lead us in the pledge.
Good morning, Board. Almighty God, enlighten each member of this Board of Supervisors as they come together for this meeting. I pray that every person will have a clear understanding of the issues that need to be discussed. Please give clarity to the purpose of this meeting and what objectives should be accomplished. May those objectives be kept on track by the facilitator and bond all the members together with a common goal. Also, may those objectives drive each individual to actively participate rather than just passively listen. God, please enable everyone to wisely and efficiently manage the time allotted for this meeting. Help them to stick to the agenda and avoid getting distracted with discussions that are not pertinent to the objectives. Finally, I pray that this meeting will be professional, productive, and that the desired outcomes may be achieved. Amen, and thank you.
Can someone shut those doors for us back there?
I was just going to say that. Could we all join me for the pledge? The Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order of the Penale County Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, September 3, 2025. Please silence your cell phones, which I'll do right now because mine's ringing. There we go. All right, well, first item on the agenda is the County Manager's Report. Mr. Lou, you got anything?
Yeah, good morning. Thank you, Chairman. Wanted to announce and welcome and congratulate Gloria Moreno. She is our new Library Director who started her appointment this month. She has lived in Penale County for over 30 years. She worked for the Town of Florence Library from 2012 to 2022. While she was there, she promoted from an entry-level position all the way up to the Library Manager. And also while she was there, she obtained her Bachelor's Degree and her Master's of Science in Library. And I do remember, as you, some of you may remember, Denise Keller, our former Library Director, she, while she was in her graduate program, she did a mentorship program under her, and she sat through with us on some ICMA supervisory effective practices. Gloria currently serves on the central, as the Central Region Representative on the Executive Board of the Arizona Library Association. And since 2022, she's been the manager at her new Santan Library. So thank you to Gloria for accepting the position, and we look forward to her directing the Library District. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is a date on current events in each of our districts. Supervisor Sertie, you want to start?
Yes. Going on right now, and I can't be there because I have this meeting in Kearney, that whole community and a lot of key individuals down there worked really hard to get the Cobra Valley Medical Clinic open, and they're cutting the ribbon on it today. And the county helped a lot in that. And so it's great for the whole area down there. And also, the fire restrictions are being lifted by National Forest, State Trust Land, and BLM on Friday. Because that's still, that's, things will still burn, so if you go out, that doesn't mean you can start fires everywhere. But just letting you know, the fire restrictions are, will be off Friday, and you can go back out, so. That's it.
Okay. Supervisor Goodman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a video, but I'd like to set a preface for this and kind of give some background on this particular organization that we began several years ago. About six years ago, I got a phone call from the YMCA that was in the facility there at Copper Basin. And they had identified about 90 families that were in need of Thanksgiving meals and asked if we could help. I immediately thought of all of the individuals that we'd been meeting with, a lot of the faith-based organizations as well as nonprofits, and called them all. We met at my office, and within about 30 minutes, we had that entire 90 individuals, their needs were being met. And two weeks later, all the food was delivered to the YMCA and distributed to those 90 families. And that's a tribute to, at that point, we begin to realize that there was a big need for some type of a organization be put together, and this video is part of that organization. So we've been working on it for the last six years, and this is some of the results of what we're headed, and where we're headed into the future. Several years ago, one of the things that our office determined was that we needed more community involvement. We started a breakfast about three years ago and have people come and talk about what they've offered the community, and it's kind of evolved from that. We're at a point right now where we realize that to be more effective, we need to put some kind of an organization to it. We were introduced to what is called "for our community." It's evolved to where it is today. We finally have a complete organization put together with the Chairman and Vice Chairs. The Tabletop Exercise has a series of questions.
One of the first questions was, what is the underserved population? And so everybody's got different ideas on that, but it makes us all think about the needs of the whole community, not just our focus group.
We're really trying to use this as an opportunity to pull together the groups that we're going to be working with long-term.
Where they feel they could use some help from this particular organization in future projects that they want to do to, maybe they can't do all of it themselves, and that's what this is all about. We're not trying to take any of these projects away from anybody, but what we're trying to do is help enhance them in any way, form, or fashion that we possibly can.
You could be a middle-class family, working two jobs and still have gaps, still have the concern of what a medical bill would be or putting food on the table. Our single moms, our single dads, our elderly, I mean, there's so many areas of need.
We're going to be talking about helping families with Thanksgiving, Christmas.
A family might have a need that isn't specifically met by a certain church or nonprofit, but if you put that out there, it's amazing when people come together what they might be able to do to help them.
Do we do a food drive of some type? Do we do a cash drive? Because some families could use cash, being able to pay rent or their utilities.
I want families to know that this is a good, good, good place to be, and there are a lot of loving, caring people committed to helping them.
When you look at the individuals that are in this room right now, having this Tabletop Exercise, they are the leaders of this community. They are the individuals that have a stake in the business here. And I'm talking about the community business, the family business, these individuals right here that are at this table. And there's going to be a lot more good than we've done in the past, a lot more for the future.
And then one more last thing to add is we're in the process, we've been getting quite a few applications on, on the new Town Council, individuals that are interested. So anybody that's out there that's still, there's still a little bit of time that they can submit the applications, and then we'll, the five of us will be reviewing those and then making a decision at a later date.
Rich?
Jeff was going to go. Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so it's been kind of a mediocre eight days or seven days. So I was able to meet with a new data center that wants to come in, gas data center in the Maricopa area on 347. And I met with constituents, and I also met with Ak Chin and to hear their concerns about this, something that's coming up in the future. Then I was able to attend the Lucid Luncheon Learn and see what's going on over there. They talked about their new building, they talked about some new car, they showed us how the operation works, and it was very interesting. I was able to attend with Vice Chair McClure on that. Then also attended a fundraiser for the American Legion in Maricopa, and we were able to raise some money for, for them, for their stuff that they like to do out there. And then also, I attended last night, along with the Maricopa City Council, I actually did a kind of an update, what's going on with the Historical Society about our 150th anniversary coming in October. And they were very excited about it. We had about 35, 40 people there. They were interested in what's going to be going on. Staff put together a great video and program for me to show them yesterday. So I really appreciate James and his crew for helping me out with that. Thank you very much. And it was great to see all these people be interested in our 150th year, how, hopefully they attend, you know, it's a little bit of a drive, but I think we'll have a good attendance on that. I believe it's October 4 from 3 to 9. So, and just a little update, I heard we're going to have an awesome drone show, and I look forward to that. So, anyway, that's it.
All right.
I've apparently been slacking off this last week. I didn't do a whole lot, but I did, I did have a great non-laborious Labor Day, so that was it, and that's all I've got.
That's all you got, huh?
That's all I got.
My grandkids asked me what Labor Day was about, and I gave them a shovel and said, "Come with me." Just a couple of things, in the Casa Grande area, there'll be some downtown events on Friday, September 26. They have a little historical celebration down there with just a lot of vendors and some things that you can hang out with, the Main Street in Casa Grande. And then at the end of October, looks like October 25, they have a downtown Halloween kind of function down there. So as I get more information, we'll put that in my newsletter. That's all I have this week for District 3. All right, moves this to item number three, Discussion, Approval or Disapproval of Purchasing Division Report. Hi.
Hi. Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Chairman and Vice Chairman. I'm Tracy Gorman, Penale County Purchasing Manager. And this is the Purchasing Division Report for September 3, 2025. In this report, the Board is requesting to approve one contract award for RFP 254-430 for CNC Managed Services for Oracle JD Edwards Enterprise 1 ERP System. The Board is requested to approve one contract amendment for RFP 252-530 for Detention Food Services. We are requesting the Board to approve one competition impractical over $100,000 per Procurement Code Section PC 1-502. There is one cooperative purchasing agreement we would like you, to notify you of, as it is between $100,000 and $250,000. And lastly, we are seeking approval of two cooperative purchase requisitions over $250,000. And I will open it for questions.
Any questions? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Purchasing Division Report as presented.
Of a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Thank you.
I just have it. Thank you. Have a great day. Brings us to item number four, Consent Items. So all, all items indicated by an alphabetically below will be handled as a single vote as a part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called and would like something removed. Anybody on the Board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item T, please.
T?
T is in Tom, yes.
Okay. Anybody else? County Manager? Audience? Does anybody from the audience have something they want pulled? Okay, seeing none? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve items, consent items A through Z minus T as presented.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. T?
T is a discussion, approval, disapproval of Yuakava issues. And Ms. Lewis, could you please come and explain what's going on here?
Good morning, Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, Members of the Board, Dana Lewis, Penale County Recorder. I'm here on behalf of item T on the agenda. This is for the Yuakava system. The Yuakava is the Uniform Overseas Absentee Citizen Voting Act. This was enacted in 1997, and there are two different portions of this program when it comes to administering elections. The one is on the recorder's side in dealing with the early voting part of it, because that part of the process is owned by the Secretary of State's office, even with little notice and two years of a contract being signed that we were not aware of. We were last month informed that the current system that we were utilizing was being removed from our ability to continue on with, and then they moved forward and enacted with this third-party vendor. We only just finished receiving the rest of the contracts for this process last night, so haven't had a chance to completely vet all of the contracts and the ins and outs of it. The other part of this process would be on the election side, and that's where you come in. By approving this, you would allow us to bring in this system, which includes a remake station, which is a ballot-on-demand printer. There are some questions with this system that our team is still vetting, and I'm not in a place of complete agreement with it as your person who's administering your elections. And I would like to make sure that if you guys have questions about the process, that I could thoroughly answer those for you.
So by denying it, what happens?
Then we don't ring a bell, we can't unring, sir. Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, once we bring the equipment on, then we are saying that in a few years, when the contract under the Secretary of State's office runs out, we will be responsible financially for the administration of the remake stations and upkeep with that. Right now, they've told us it's going to, it's going to cost statewide about $300,000 a year.
Per county or state?
We're being told at this time, $300,000 per year for all of us. It'll be a joint.
So, hmm, okay, so we ring a bell, we can't unring. So you're seeing it as a problem that it's not vetted, that's correct?
Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, Members of the Board, this is one of those situations where they've had access to this vendor, this vendor's had accesses, access to our voter records with our knowledge, and they've been working it in the background without us being participating in that process. And so each county, you know, has the ability from what we call a bottom-up governance of election processes. You know, the Secretary of State removed that when he enabled it from the recorder's side because he does own the voter registration process, which allows for the electronic portion of a ballot from a Yuakava voter. I can't do anything about that. But on this side, you, as the Board of Supervisors, still own that process. There have been some issues. In Penale County, we're very blessed that we have a team of professionals that administers our elections, that actually create our ballots and do all of the process of the election where this, I would say, very aggressive rollout meant many of the smaller counties didn't have the chance to actually program some of their stuff. They had to allow a third-party vendor to accomplish this task. We've always stood in Penale County as making sure that we're not allowing that interface of vendors. This goes against a lot of the principalities for transparency and security that we've enabled. And I don't have the time at this point to have tested that system, so I ask for a pause on it.
And you, you've talked about this in the past, so that lurking about in the background is not a secure idea, in your opinion?
Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, Members of the Board, at this time, I do not believe it has been a fully-vetted process that's been able to be tested in a standalone environment. We've been in an active election. I'm not very comfortable with that. And I think that, again, you know, this is a situation that two years in the making, we could have been part of that process, that workflow we could have worked through appropriately, and it seems that it is being very rushed. Just this week, we realized that we don't have the ability to overlay the early part of the ballot in this program, so we're trying to still work through that. But I'm in an active election right now, so there's some problems.
Okay. And let's see, so, I mean, security's a big part of our election process.
Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, Members of the Board, I do believe this Board of Supervisors stands for transparency and security when it comes to the administration of the electoral process.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a question.
I do, too.
Ms. Lewis, this affects the overseas ballot, so that way, maybe you might be able to just explain that so people understand what it affects.
So in, I think it was 2008 that the, we had the Yuakava Act, but then in 2008, the Move Act then went forward. And what that allows, it allows us 45 days prior to an election to be able to submit a ballot to a voter. So if you're in Iraq, you're overseas, we have the ability to get you that mail ballot. And then commanders have the ability to use a special pay account to make sure we get that ballot back. The electronic portion of voting was engaged because we at no way, shape, or form ever want to disenfranchise a military voter, so what we allow is when they're in space or when they're in a submarine at the bottom of the ocean, they have the ability to use an electronic process. It's supposed to be minimal, and still, the first access to a ballot should be paper. We've long believed this, and I would never do anything to keep or put an obstacle between a voter and the ballot box. That is not what we're doing here. What we're asking is for us to ensure that we have that transparency and security and that we're working as partners with the Secretary of State as we continue to roll out this process.
Thank you for the explanation.
And I, and I guess the question I have, Mr. Chair, is a yes vote would do what? Because you're, it states here, the receipt and testing. Explain that to me.
Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McClure, Mr. Goodman, Members of the Board, a no vote would mean that I do not accept their equipment, and we continue doing it in the secure fashion that we've been doing it since I've been part of this process. So that's for about six years.
Well, what's a yes vote mean?
What was a yes vote?
A yes vote, Chairman Miller, a yes vote would mean that I would accept the receipt of this equipment and these remake stations.
So, Mr. Chair, at this time, I move that we disapprove item T as presented.
I have a second. Oops, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, I, I really, I need to explore that a little bit more. I'd ask that we go into a e-session on this. I want to talk, I want to know the legal ramifications about accepting this equipment. Okay, then. Can I get a motion to go in e-session?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we go into e-session on item T.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, everybody. Let's see, so we'll recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and open up the Penale County Public Health and Services District. I believe we have consent. So all items indicated by alphabetically below will be handled as a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. It looks like we have A. Anybody want anything pulled? There, there, out in the audience? Seeing none? Board's pleasure.
Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the Health and Services A as written.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Moves this, I will close the Public Health District meeting and reopen the Board of Supervisors meeting. Brings us to item number six, Call to the Public. I call to public is a time and period for members of the public to address the Board of Supervisors, to provide public input relating to subject matters within the Board of Supervisors' authority or jurisdiction. Those wishing to address the Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Actions taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing the staff to study the matter or reschedule it for further consideration and discussion at a later date. Do we have any cards? No cards, but that doesn't, you don't have to have a card, so anybody want to call to public?
Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, the Board of Supervisors is a vital venue for developing, discussing, and decision-making on basic American self-government issues such as voting, issues that directly impact not only Penale County but reverberate across the nation as they are today. The agenda includes two such vital items that underscore the need to extend open debate, two items that deserve discussion by the public, Consent Items T and Agenda Item 9, both dealing with election procedures involving our county elections office, our county attorney, and the Secretary of State, both on the agenda with little opportunity for public input and public education. Item T, a consent agenda with little discussion, the other agenda, controversial rulemaking that is being argued behind closed doors. Decisions we in Arizona made in 2020 and 2024 presidential election and the controversies that flowed from those voting results continue to reverberate across the nation. Years later, election controversies remain mired in lawsuits involving false claims by defeated Republican presidential elector candidates who claimed without evidence that their defeated presidential candidate won. Two presidential campaigns that were supercharged by the big lie that claimed, again without proof, that victory was stolen and followed by a violent insurrection attempt on January 6. The public is now left perplexed by efforts to openly suppress voting by gerrymandering congressional boundaries and by adding burdensome election rulemaking that makes administering election results more difficult and cumbersome. I suggest the Chair consider advising the public before each meeting those agenda items on which the public can insert at some point. And I continue to encourage increased opportunity for dialogue, such as between me and Supervisor Michael Goodman. I think it would help to inform the public and to create confidence in our election process. These are complicated issues that require you to go behind closed doors. Think of us and the public who don't have an opportunity to be informed by what's being discussed behind closed doors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. that flowed from those voting results continue to reverberate across the nation. Years later, election controversies remain mired in lawsuits involving false claims by defeated Republican presidential elector candidates who claimed without evidence that their defeated presidential candidate won. Two presidential campaigns that were supercharged by the big lie that claimed, again without proof, that victory was stolen and followed by a violent insurrection attempt on January 6. The public is now left perplexed by efforts to openly suppress voting by gerrymandering congressional boundaries and by adding burdensome election rulemaking that makes administering, administering election results more difficult and cumbersome. I suggest the chair consider advising the public before each meeting those agenda items on which the public can insert at some point. And I continue to encourage increased opportunity for dialogue, such as between me and Supervisor Michael Goodman. I think it would help to inform the public and to create confidence in our election process. These are complicated issues that require you to go behind closed doors. Think of us and the public who don't have an opportunity to be informed by what's being discussed behind closed doors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Seeing no one, we'll move on to item number seven, which does have a public hearing component to it, but we'll have the presentation, I believe, from Sarah.
Good morning, Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McClure, Sarah Hess, GIS Support Supervisor, Information Technology Services Department. I'm here today to present on our department's interest in repealing our GIS data fee schedule and moving to an open data portal. For the record, the affidavit of publication for the notice of hearing has been provided to the clerk of the board's office. It did not make the agenda. The purpose of this repeal is to reduce staff time. Currently, our staff have to process custom data orders, payment processing, public records requests, customer inquiries through phone and email about what's available with our data. It's to help the customers' time and needs. Currently, right now, our customers can only purchase data packages, even if they're only interested in a single layer. They have a wait time associated with that data purchase. We have to wait till we receive the data request, wait until we receive and process payment, then process their data, and then deliver it to the customer. This is a one-time data purchase for the customer, so as fast as we are growing, they don't get updated data. They would have to complete another purchase request. I've listed Arizona counties with open GIS data portals for your review, also hyperlinked, as well as other local jurisdictions within Pinal County that have open GIS data portals. This is our current package for purchase. I did want to bring your attention to our parcel data. Our fee schedule only approves the distribution of the parcel line and the parcel number. All other parcel information, such as ownership information, is distributed through the assessor's office through a separate fee schedule. These are our current costs for our data packages. A continuation of that. Here we have our GIS data sale history, an updated slide for your review. We are ready to move to the open data portal. The site would be hosted through existing technology, which is Esri ArcGIS Hub and ArcGIS Open Data. It'll include the exact same data that is currently being sold. It'll be updated weekly through automation. That part has also been completed and is ready to go. And users would be able to download individual files or the complete data package of their choosing at any time. And that's all I had for my presentation.
All right. I know that it'll reduce some phone calls to my office, so I'm happy to see us go to this. Any questions or comments at this time?
Well, Mr. Chair, I look at the, the downward spiral, if you will, of the sales, and it seems like the revenue from it does not pay for the cost of actually doing it, so I think the free side would be a much better way to go.
This is, this is a real customer service thing because...
It is customer, customer service, up to date, you know.
I just, how soon is it ready to go? I mean, you said it's ready to go. How quick would it?
This evening.
If it's, okay. Good.
It's good. All right.
Push the button, yeah.
Okay. This has a public hearing component to it. Does anybody from the audience want to speak to it? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve item number seven as presented.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Ayes have it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, item number eight is an exec session, so we're already in exec session. We will reconvene in exec session. Oppose say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Brings us to item number nine on the agenda, approval or disapproval of outside counsel to file a meagre brief on behalf of Pinal County.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number nine as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.